We're going to have Gary make a few introductory remarks, but we're also going to have some people leave the meeting perhaps before we're done because they have another city commission meeting to go to relating to the wastewater treatment facility. So Gary, go ahead.
President Johnson, Commission, as you introduced Carla with Apex tonight to do our sewer utility rate study, she's been kind enough to look at this for us. With all our capital improvement projects, they're all funded in different ways. Since the beginning with the water reclamation facility, wastewater projects are funded through the SRF. As Superintendent Sullivan said, the problem with like the SRF is it's a loan, we have to pay it back. One of the questions we had is what are the, what should the sewer rates be once all the capital improvements are done? We're going to have multiple new facilities, increased operation and maintenance, and when we were, or I was asked that question, I directly went to Carla and asked for help to determine what we're looking at for the rates to pay for our capital improvement projects, and also the question for other entities that is South Heart and the refinery, what costs should be fair for them to connect to the City of Dickinson's system. So I'll let Carla present.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov, and President Commissioners, thanks for having me. We've had a number of meetings with city staff over the last couple of months talking about this, looking at all the different variables with rate setting, projecting future conditions, again, getting a crystal ball out to see, you know, based on past history, based on projections, where the expenses and rates needed to be. And then the end of last week, we had a meeting and we came to a consensus of a proposed rate structure, and that's what I'm here tonight to talk to you about, and again, we'll be leaving to talk to South Heart City Commission about the same thing after this meeting. So with that, briefly, our overview of my presentation tonight is just the rate-setting process in general, looking at revenues, looking at expenses, cash balances of the utility fund, and what kind of debt coverage you're looking for. We came up with a proposed rate structure and plugged in some examples, what that means to the single-family residential home, and some other examples we had, and finally, recommendations. So first of all, the rate-setting process, we really looked at a number of things, number of different variables. What are your revenues now, and what are they projected to be, or what do they need to be, hence, what do we need to set the rates at? What are your existing operation and maintenance expenses, and what will those be? Again, with all the capital improvement projects going on right now, those are going to increase. What is the debt service on the borrowed funds moving forward? What kind of capital expenses are there that aren't financed? What type of things do you need cash balance to pay for? Again, your cash balance in your account, if unforeseen circumstances arise that are in the budget, do you have cash balance to cover that? And what type of reserve are you looking at getting every year to build that cash balance moving forward? So first of all, again, why did we look at this? And first and foremost, of course, to ensure the financial stability of the utility, to make sure the utility can pay its bills every year with all the commitments it has. Also, not only the financial stability, but making sure we establish a fair and equitable rate structure for all customers. So between the single-family residential user, people living in apartments, hotel complexes, and commercial entities, to make sure that there's some kind of common ground that establishes a fair rate structure. And then finally, to allow your management, city staff, to make sound financial decisions. Do you know if something happens unforeseen, is there a cash balance, and can they pay for that if the need arises? So first of all, we looked at revenues. The big question here is, is there existing revenues in the system that can pay for these future needs that are going on? So first of all, what are your existing revenue sources? Base rates, usage rates, there's some connection fees, there are sales from irrigation water out of your ponds, and then bulk water sales. And I should mention, bulk water sales, I believe, is taken out of the water side of your budget, but it has been a big revenue source for you. So certainly, with some of your joint labor force for water and sewer, that bulk water sales has helped the overall fund in the past. So base rates, right now, your residential base rate is $7.50 a month. There's 6,200 residential customers, and we looked at all of those customers pretty detailed manner. For the most part, around 6,000 or so of them, pretty typical residential usage. Most residential users are in the 3,000, 4,000, even 5,000 gallons per month. However, we found about 200 customers with consumption that is well over that expected volume, sometimes up to 60,000 gallons a month. That is not a residential user. We started looking into some of those. Many are multifamily apartment units, maybe there's 30 apartment units within that one account, when in reality, they're getting charged the same as a, you know, single-family home. And so, right there, we need to start digging into that, and it's outside of the scope of this and the timeframe with what we needed to come up with. But those kind of things we need to look at to make sure people are being charged equitably across the city. In the same way, commercial, commercials charge, starting at $10 a base rate per month, and then depending on the water meter size, the per-month charge for base rate increases. Basically means, the larger the water meter, the more wastewater they're producing, which has to reserve much more capacity in your system. So their base rate in turn should be higher. There's over 1,000 commercial customers, and again, we looked at each tier, meaning, you know, inch-and-a-half water meter, two-inch, three-inch. 90% in each tier are very consistent with the water usage, and then you have a few outliers that are double, triple, even up to 10 times the amount of usage, that don't quite seem to be fitting within. So those also, again, need to be looked at moving forward to make sure everything is equitably charged. The other thing we found, if they're not on city water, if they're on well water, they're not being charged a base rate right now, which really should be remedied as well. Your other source of revenue is connection fees. Now, the concept of connection fees is basically, a new customer coming into your service is going to pay a share of the infrastructure that's already in place. So your existing users that have been paying base rates and usage fees for years and years, someone coming in pays something upfront to buy into the capacity of your system. And that's very common in rapidly growing areas that need a lot of new infrastructure. You're just trying to provide equity between new customers and the longtime residents. So, you know, the longtime residents aren't bearing the majority of the burden of this new infrastructure. So again, connection fees are based on meter size. Again, the larger the meter, the larger the water consumption, hence, the more wastewater production, and the more capacity that would have to be reserved. Briefly, a little bit on revenues. Right now, you have variable irrigation revenue, of course, it depends on the weather. And frankly, your irrigators have been allowing you to get by on your lack of capacity right now. They've been applying some water out of your ponds, which helps you get through, you know, certain weather conditions when you can't discharge. Again, I want to mention bulk water sales, just because it has been such a large revenue source, I felt it needed to be mentioned, but again, that's more on your water utility than the wastewater utility. Usage rates just went up to $2,000 gallon. Of course, as there's more revenue, as there's more consumption in usage, so as your community's growing, the revenues are projected to go up from your usage rates. Again, there were some outliers in that, that didn't look like they got bumped up to the new $2 per thousand rate, and that, again, should be looked at moving forward. A bit on future revenues, it was found that existing revenues cover existing expenses. Now, I believe that $2,000 was a raise in 2014, so it's projected that by that raise, you'll be generating more revenue, and I believe that was done just because you knew that these projects were upcoming and trying to build that fund as these new expenses arise. So you will have additional revenues to apply to the new projects, however, that will not cover the entirety of what is needed. So some alternatives for covering the additional funds needed are an increase in base rates. You could increase usage rates, increase what's called SACS, or those connection fees, sewer access charges, additional water reuse sales, which there's already one customer under contract, and additional bulk water sales, that's a question mark, is that going to the water fund? Will that continue, or will it move more towards reuse water sales? You know, that's all projections at this point. So that was a little bit on revenues. Now on to expenses, and I won't go through these line item by line item, but I think you've seen in the past, this is the capital improvements plan for the sewer side of things. I've included the water reclamation facility, all the way down to lift station five upgrades and Highway 10 pump station. One thing I want to mention here is, the anticipated revenue source is through a state revolving fund loan. Again, that's a loan at 2.5% over 20 years. So what I've calculated here is the annual debt service for each of those projects, and then collectively for all projects. It's just over $5.6 million a year that will have to be repaid over 20 years. Now, the other thing I want to mention is, this isn't all going to happen right away. A number of these projects have not been bid yet, so it's anticipated that those repayments are at least two years into the future, before that would start, the repayment on those loans would be made. The ones in this area have been bid, completion of construction looks like the end of the year, so we're looking at a 2015 when you'd start to repay some of those. Other expenses, looking at O&M expenses, and this, the start of this spreadsheet was a very detailed look at energy costs, labor, and I've just summarized it here for you, but I do want to mention, this is at full buildout of the water reclamation facility. And of course, O&M is directly related to the capacity, so we're probably going to be starting out at about 70% capacity. So initial O&M expenses would be lower than what I'm showing, but just to be conservative, this is at buildout. And finally, capital replacement, this is just a fund, starting when the plant and all these, this infrastructure goes online, because these things aren't going to last forever, you start a fund for replacement of pumps and different items that will see their useful life in 20 years, so you're not at ground zero at that point. You've built a fund to start replacing those items. Quickly, cash balance and debt service. Basically, cash balance is your savings account. You don't budget use out of that all the time, although it does get used at times during the year. If an unforeseen circumstance comes up that wasn't in the budget, you have a cash balance that you can use. Now, there's, you can find references for many different percentages of annual budget and cash balance, and I found 25% to 50% very common, and you're within that range moving forward. And then again, your debt coverage is just, what do you want to collect from your base rates and usage rates and other revenue, above and beyond what your programmed expenses are? So a lot of times, a coverage ratio is used, sometimes when you bond, they make you have a certain coverage ratio, just so you know that you're collecting above and beyond in case of an unforeseen adverse circumstance. And typical 1.1 to 1.3 coverage ratio, so as I move forward with scenarios of base rates, I calculated a coverage ratio each time, and I was over the 1.2 to 1.3 range when I was looking at rates. So, so, once all those items were programmed in, we started taking a crack at different proposed rates. And again, there's so many variables, we did really look at a lot of iterations moving forward, and this is what the consensus was. So I'll start walking through. I mentioned, some of these projects are only looking at, some are only just bid now, some are to be bid, you know, the end of this year. So we looked at a phased approach, looking at debt service needed through 2015 was our phase one, and that cost was 4.1 million of debt service necessary. And I'm just talking base rates, I should back up just a step. We discussed having base rates able to cover our debt service, so that we know our debt service is a fixed number that we're going to be obligated to pay every year. Base rates are a much more stable source of revenue, whereas, usage rates go up and down, of course, with usage and growth within the community and harder to forecast. So we wanted to make sure our base rates would cover our debt service to the most extent that we could. So that's how we started, is a phase one base rate needing to cover 4.15 million. Now, in your 2014 budget, you've already included repayment of the water reclamation facility, which was $1.9 million. So I didn't want to double count that, because that's a pretty big ticket item. So the additional revenue needed for phase one was $2.2 million a year. And then the next scenario was the remainder of the projects, and you can see 1.5 million. And we're looking at covering those with base rates, various water sales, and sewer access charges. So again, like I said, we went through numerous iterations of different revenue sources and came up with what we thought was conservative, what we thought made sense moving forward. So here was our 2.2 million for phase one. We're looking at increasing our sewer access charges to generate an additional $500,000 in revenue. We already have a customer for reuse water, Dakota Prairie Refinery, for 210,000. That's based on the negotiated rates and the estimated quantity that they've given us. Bulk water sales, now, this doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be domestic water sales, it could be reuse water sales. I think right now, it's over $2 million that you're getting in revenue, and we did not consider that going towards this, but we thought a conservative estimate was $300,000 a year moving forward. And then, as I mentioned, there was some excess in revenue because you've already raised your usage rates, that would provide an excess that to apply to these new projects. So when you do the math, we are at a deficit of $414,000, and the only revenue stream we have left to account for is the base rates. So since we did use the sewer access charge, to determine the base rates, which we came up with $11 per equivalent dwelling unit, or that's basically an average single-family home equivalent dwelling unit, we're using the SAC charges, again, I'll go back here, to take off a portion of what we'd have to charge in base fees. So now you're going to be having outside contracts with South Heart, with the refinery, and, you know, other unknown entities that may come along. Since we're not going to be able to collect SAC fees from them because they're outside city limits, we looked at making it equitable for the City of Dickinson residents, who will be paying those, and outside customers who won't. So we've increased the base rates for outside customers to an additional 10%, just to make it equitable with your own city residents. So the outside city residents in phase one will be looking at $12.10 per equivalent dwelling unit. And here's just a spreadsheet showing what your current, your City of Dickinson, and then the outside customer. And, you know, this says per EDU or equivalent dwelling unit, and the things we talked about, how to set the number of EDUs, would be, all of your outside customers would be per contract, and they'd have to provide an estimated water usage, and we would calculate how many EDUs that is. Now, how did I go about setting all of these meter charges? I looked at, again, the typical EDU, or the typical usage for a single-family residential home, and then looked at all of your existing customers, and came up with a range of what the typical 1.5-inch water meter usage was. And basically, that was approximately three times the typical residential unit. So their base rate was three times what a residential unit was, so on and so forth. And when you get, you know, there's quite a jump to 4-inch, they basically were 10 times the single-family residential, and so on. So really, what we tried to do is make it equitable between all commercial users, residential users, and outside users moving forward. Proposed SAC charges is the same manner. You can see those went up significantly, which in a rapidly growing area is very common. And again, that was just to try to equate some of the people who have been living in Dickinson their whole lives, and now all these infrastructure improvements are necessary. This will put some of the financial cost on to new people coming into town, where they will be paying to get into the capacity that's already provided for them. So, and this is O&M, I started looking at the, of course, O&M costs. You did raise already in the 2014 budget, 500,000, so we were able to take that off. And I ran a number of scenarios with growth, and as growth continues, your revenue from existing rates of $2 per thousand will cover the additional O&M, and provide some excess that we were able to apply to the debt service. So I wanted to provide you with a few examples here. Single-family residential is estimated 1 EDU, as I talked about, proposed at $11 for base rate, and I just use a common usage of 5,000 gallons a month, so that's $10. So the estimated monthly charge would be $21. I believe now it's around 17, when we looked at what your average residential user was. When we looked at South Heart, they have approximately 280 EDUs or equivalent dwelling units, and that would be their base rate, and they would again have the $2,000, so their estimated monthly charge, just over 6,000. So on with Dakota Prairie Refinery, looking at what their usage is going to be, that's, you can see over 1,300 EDUs. If you do not look at it as an EDU, you could have the tendency to have their base rate much lower than what the common residential family base rate would be. So that's really why you want to equate things to EDUs moving forward, the monthly charge. And I just use a larger industrial, commercial-type entity, Baker Boy, because they are outside of city limits, and right now, they don't have a water meter. So this is how we would set their rate structure, is on the number of EDUs on a base rate, and then have the usage. So again, looking at phase two, as I said, I recommend looking really line by line in your residential users, and making sure everybody is being charged the appropriate base rate, and also with usage and commercial users. I would recommend you do that over the next few months, and then again, maybe a year from now, take inventory and see how that's affected revenue. If it hasn't increased revenue enough to cover where we're at, and then once the new projects come online in 2016, when you'll have to start paying those additional projects back, looking at a projected deficit of 1.5 million. And again, if you raise SACs again, we just came up with these scenarios, you would have a deficit of about $500,000. So the base rates at that point would go from $11 to $14, outside residents, 12, 10 to 15. Again, this is, you know, four years in the future, and there's a lot of other revenue sources that could come to fruition by then, so we just felt that a phased approach was the way to go. If all of a sudden, the reuse water takes off, there's a lot more revenue, you wouldn't have to go to this point. Septage haulers, biosolids treatment, there's a lot of potential revenue sources that we're looking at. So we thought by a phased approach, we would take inventory again, you know, in a year and two years, and see where we're at. But, you know, using the same methodology, this is where we'd be. If all remains the same and our projections were accurate, you know, this is where we'd be for a phase two. So in summary, recommendations, implement phase one rates as soon as possible, because we do know these costs are going to be coming very quickly, and repayment on these loans will have to start. Look at a detailed analysis of residential customers to ensure all the base rate charges are being equitably done across the board. The same way for commercial users, and any inconsistencies in consumption and base rate charges. And then reevaluate a year from now, and see how things are tracking, if there's additional revenue that was found, and to determine if phase two rates need to be implemented from there. With that, any questions? Yeah.
Regarding the $11 and the $2, can you give us a perspective where other communities might be with those two numbers?
Where the...
The Bismarcks, the Minn...
Oh, yes, yes. You know, right now, I think all your rate comparisons have been to stabilization pond systems, because that's a form of treatment you had. Now, moving forward, we need to start, like you said, comparing to more mechanical plant-type facilities. So when we looked, I believe, you know, I should have printed that out in front of me, I believe it was in the middle. I think it was very similar to Bismarck.
Bismarck currently is at $21 a month total, and we would be bringing it up to $21.
Yep, with the new rates, that's what I thought it was basically equal to Bismarck.
Okay, thank you.
If you have questions for Ms. Olson, feel free to ask them, but we're going to lose Gary and Sean here in a few minutes. We've already lost Ed Kurtan to go to the South Heart meeting, so there are a few things on the agenda that I don't think we're going to be able to do, but I, we could jump around a little bit and try to get a few of these in, but...
Yep, and President Johnson, I want to remind you, we're taking Carla with us.
So she's leaving too. When are you leaving?
Yeah, we need to probably leave in about 10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay. Well, we've already lost Ed Kurtan. I think what we would do is jump down to item F, the on-sale, off-sale liquor license, because I think that's yours, Mr. Kessel.
I also am prepared to do the subarea plan if you need...
Okay, just, we'll keep going then.
Okay.
Quickly, Mr. Kessel.
Sorry, I lost my... The on/off sale liquor license issue, we have formally been, excuse me, approached by Spartan Nash to implement another on- and off-sale license. These are currently limited by our population, and we would need to recognize, we, of course, being the city commission, recognize a population of 21,000 people currently residing within the city limits of Dickinson, in order to add another liquor license of this class. Since Spartan Nash has made that request, that's why it appears before you on this commission agenda item, what we're asking for is, number one, do you recognize at least 21,000 inside our city limits? And if so, provide us with the authority to then initiate the ordinance, which means that we would use a bid process to award that license, extra license that you would then create. In the past, we have set a minimum bid price, and then held a, essentially, an auction, and then the highest bidder, highest qualified bidder received the new liquor license.
And the minimum is 185,000 per ordinance, right?
I don't know that that number is in ordinance.
Mr. President, Commissioner Olman, the amount is at the discretion of the city commission. It states, ordinance states that you may set a minimum bid price, you do not have to do so. The 185,000 that is included in the resolution, in your packets, is the same number that we used for the last on-off sale license that was issued by the city.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Kessel, can you just quickly tell us how you're sure of the 21,000? The arithmetic you're using and...
We've had several presentations before this body that have included the landfill numbers, where their estimates, based on the amount of tonnage coming in, was 30,000 people. Based on the amount of connections that you see with our water, and based on the estimates that we've received from NDSU, I'm very comfortable saying we're over 21,000 people.
Okay.
If that's enough for the commission.
I just want to know that we've got some arithmetic basis for it, not just a feel.
Yeah.
This isn't a time-sensitive item. We could place this on the next meeting... We could place this on the next meeting agenda. We could ask staff to come in and show us numerically why they think we're at at least 21,000 or greater. And we could also ask for some public input at this time or at that time before we actually act on the resolution. I think another thing for you to consider, I know, for example, if you favor the presentation we had at a previous meeting with a beer-only off-sale license class, then if that passed, if that was favored, I know I wouldn't favor another on-sale, off-sale liquor license myself. So I think, you know, we probably have to discuss that too. I mean, we heard the presentation. I don't think any of you as commissioners have requested that staff draw up an ordinance showing that class.
That's correct, President Johnson. We have not received that request.
So I mean, we're going to hurry along here in the interest of time. And I think it would be wise, myself, to maybe defer the full action on this till the next meeting and allow for public input. I suspect there are individuals that would like to address this. But I think it would be wise if you could show us, you know, a worksheet on why we're at least 21,000 people.
A PowerPoint, a slide, something up on the screen.
And, you know, you probably got enough data with, you know, the water hookups and as you said, the landfill usage and that kind of thing.
No problem. We'll definitely be able to provide that for you at next commission meeting.
Would that be okay with you as commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go on then to the subarea plan, the RFP for that.
Okay, thank you, President Johnson. Commissioners, in your packets, you've received a draft of the RFP, our request for proposal that we would propose be initiated. Within that document, the idea is that our, when we did the comprehensive plan, it did not envision the amount of growth that we've had and especially growth that has been in a westerly direction with the additions of the Dakota Prairie Refinery, the Bakken Oil Express, the aforementioned utility service that we intend to provide to South Heart, that is now creating a corridor of growth essentially a mile north of the interstate and following the railroad corridor to the south of Highway 10, out about a half a mile beyond the proposed new interstate exchange at Highway 56. That kind of geographically encompasses the area that we would like to develop a subarea plan for. We have, excuse me, I have presented this concept to this county commission several months ago, so they are aware of this plan. It would include certain areas that would not be a full comprehensive plan, but it would certainly, we would like to have the results incorporated into the comprehensive plan. The main areas that we would study would be population projections, land use, transportation and transportation corridors, capital facilities, infrastructure and utilities, community facilities such as police and fire, and then a potential annexation or phased annexation plan. We have already had requests to have property as far as three miles outside of our existing city limits annexed into the city of Dickinson. So in order to do that, we need a plan. We need something like this in order to do that in an orderly fashion or not do it at all. And this is the document that we feel would engage a planning organization to develop a response and allow us to make informed decisions with regard to growth to the western side of Dickinson. We have issued letters of request from landowners and/or businesses that currently occupy land that would exist within that geographic area, soliciting investments into this plan. I've already received indications from some that they are willing to invest. So this, the cost of this plan would be, for the most part, generated through the landowners within that area. That would conclude my reports, and we would recommend issuance of the RFP.
So you're asking for our approval for this request for proposal?
That would be accurate.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners?
Just one quick one. I think it's a good idea. We need to do this. I think the RFP is well-written. The only thing I'd ask is that we add an item in this process for impacts to the county. We've had issues in the past with the rural fire district, some of the taxation questions, and I think it's fair that those be addressed during this. This is a big area.
It's a good suggestion.
Okay, that's not a problem.
We'll add that to the...
We'll amend the RFP to include impacts to the county.
Other comments?
I think it's important that we do it, you know, right away too, because if they're planning to build another school, whether it's high school or junior, it would definitely impact us.
Okay, would there be a motion then regarding the request for proposal?
I'll move we approve it.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Olman, Mr. Steiner, Mrs. Stuckard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Okay, I think you can go.
Thank you very much.
I think, I think we have the talent remaining at the table. We can get through the rest of this.
You probably did before my department.
I'm just trying to, you're not feeling well, so I'm trying to be kind, so. Okay. Mr. Coleen, you're probably going to get some unexpected introductions here, but I don't think that'll be the case for the next two. So we'll go back to item D, the Wells Fargo Improvement Bond Ordinance, and have Mr. Coleen introduce that.
Thank you, Mr. President. No problem with the introductions. I think Mr. Kubes and I might get a little lonely up here, but otherwise we should be okay. The ordinance before you, Mr. President Commissioners, is a bond ordinance with respect to a bond issue from Wells Fargo. As you have heard from multiple meetings in the past, we are looking at financing and funding sources for the multiple public improvements that we will be constructing within the next several months. The state revolving fund and oil impact money from the state has been a substantial source of those funds, but there is also some additional borrowing that the city will need to do in order to fund these public improvements. This ordinance provides for a bond issue from Wells Fargo in the amount of $20 million. There are a couple of projects that are specifically listed out within the ordinance that we would use this money in order to fund. Those projects include the finished water pump station, the, let's see, West, 10th Avenue West, the West Side Dedicated Water Main, 21st Street West, and 40th Street West. The bond would be issued pursuant to a security interest in the 1/2% sales tax. City staff recommend approval. We'd be happy to take any questions, Mr. President.
I do have a question, and Mr. Kessel was going to comment on the recent action that the State Water Commission took where they're granting the city $18 million for water projects. And my question would be that we've listed primarily water projects here for Wells Fargo. We can't double up on those. You know, we can't apply the $18 million in state money and the $20 million in Wells Fargo money if, if between the two of them, they don't, if they more than pay for the projects listed. So I would just ask, you know, between first reading and second reading, that we really do double-check and make sure that we've got the projects listed properly.
We will do that, that double-check, Mr. President. I can tell you, the projects that are listed on this bond ordinance amount to roughly about $30 million worth of improvements. There is an additional at least $15 or $20 million in water improvements that we will have with additional water tanks. So we feel that applying the bond monies to these projects, we would have additional...
We have more costs than we have funds.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I just want you to double-check that.
If I could piggyback, I had the same question. I know we can use the 20 million many places in the coming years. So is it, can we do this flexible enough that it can be moved around?
We believe so. These were specific projects that Wells Fargo had an interest in funding. And I think it was, as we've discussed before, they like water projects and those funds that have a specific repayment source, that have a rate that they'd be able to levy against in the event of, that they would need to do so. Road projects are more difficult to fund, and we had to do some work to get road projects included within this list of projects. But we do have a teleconference with them tomorrow, and we can discuss that specific issue.
And the verbiage in this specifically says, "these projects, but not limited to," is the verbiage that you put in place, which gives us that flexibility that you're talking about.
That's correct.
Well, we've, we've said that in our resolution, but they have a term sheet that perhaps is a little more restrictive. See, that's...
And there is an indenture that we just received prior to this meeting. It's approximately a 70-page document that we'll have to go through and verify the terms.
But this gets the process formally started. It's just first reading, and you're not going to do second reading until you have all those items clarified and...
Correct.
And you have a, an agreement between the city and Wells Fargo that you can bring to us.
Correct.
Right. With that, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance. If so, you can just come to the podium now and state your name. We'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public? Any other comments by city commissioners? This is ordinance number...
President, it's the ordinance 1542.
1542, okay. Is there a motion regarding 1542?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1542.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stuckard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Olman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to item E, driving without liability insurance ordinance. Mr. Coleen.
Mr. President, this is a proposed ordinance to, ordinance change to the offense of driving without liability insurance. Current city code includes that offense as a Class B misdemeanor. The North Dakota Attorney General's Office recently issued an opinion that found that due to some changes to the law, the state law, in the last legislative session, driving without liability insurance is not a criminal violation, but is instead an administrative traffic violation. There is a specific fee structure that is included within the state law, the first conviction of a $150 flat fee and a second conviction of a $300 flat fee. The judges, both our municipal judge and district judge, have found that they are bound by that Attorney General's opinion. And this change, proposed change to the ordinance allows them to, allows our city code to comply with the finding of the Attorney General. City staff would recommend approval, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners?
Yeah.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment regarding this ordinance? No one from the public? And this is ordinance 1543?
Correct.
Is there a motion regarding 1543?
I'll move approve 1543.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Olman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Coleen, under reports, the only item there that I think want to discuss is the Lamont subdivision special assessment request. Are you prepared to lead a discussion there?
I can do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President Commissioners, there is a letter in your packet from council to a developer of the Lamont second edition. There were some documents that were provided at your desk tonight. I would refer you to the larger of the two documents, which is referred to as a replat of the Lamont first edition. And the specific lot that we are dealing with here is identified there as Lot 1 on the left-hand side of the page and the west side of that proposed subdivision. The letter from the developers' council goes into some detail, but to summarize, this developer first proposed this replat back in about 2009. There are some pretty significant stormwater issues with respect to this property. And at that time, they were working through those issues and supplied to the city a request for development impact fees in order to construct 2nd Avenue West. Back in 2009, we, of course, were in a different situation than we are today. We did have the development impact fee program available to developers. And it was indicated to the developer at that time that they could potentially use development impact fees in order to construct 2nd Avenue West. As they were working through their development plan, they did end up selling Lot 1 to a proposed, to a buyer, someone who was interested in putting up a hotel upon that lot. And they sold that property with the expectation that they would be able to use development impact fees in order to construct 2nd Avenue West. Now that they are finally solving their stormwater issues, they are proceeding to develop that property and wanting to move forward with it. And of course, our development impact fee program is no longer available. We are not accepting new applications for that program, and the monies that were initially allocated for that have been expended. Nevertheless, the developer wanted to make the commission aware of some of the unique circumstances with this lot. They would still like to pursue a special assessment district or development impact fee district. We have indicated to them that, from city staff's perspective, that does not look like a possibility. But they did want to propose this to the City Commission as well and make you aware of some of the special circumstances with respect to their development. If the commission is interested in the potential of moving ahead with new development impact fee district or a special assessment district, we can convey that to the developer and put things in motion for that. Although our current direction from, from the City Commission, I think, is that you are not interested, but we wanted to put that to you and see if anything has changed or if you would like to entertain the possibility of a special assessment district here.
I have a question, Mr. Coleen. This is a plat now that isn't recorded?
Mr. President, the Lamont first edition is recorded. The replat of the Lamont first edition is essentially waiting for approval at this point. It looks, as of today, actually, that the stormwater issue has been substantially resolved, and we are prepared at this point to bring this forward to the City Commission for final approval. But it has not been recorded yet.
Okay, so, but the original plat was recorded because typically we would not allow sales of lots until it's, the approved plat is recorded. So am I to assume then, when they sold Lot 1, it was proper to do so?
There is a section of our code that does state that lots cannot be sold until they are, until the plat is recorded, until it's approved. So it is something that we would, would consider inconsistent with our subdivision code.
So did they, did they not have an approved plat, a recorded one when they sold Lot 1?
Correct.
Oh, I didn't understand that from the attorney's letter.
And I don't think that is spelled out in the attorney's letter, no.
Do we know in fact that it has been sold, or is there some kind of an agreement?
I have not seen a deed on it. The indication that I've received from the attorney is that it is sold, but I have not seen a deed.
Okay. And it's worth noting that on the plat that is on file, the streets are the same as what they are on the replat. So I suppose it could have been sold by meets and bounds or something, I suppose.
It could have. That, it still would have been a segregation of that lot that is inconsistent with our subdivision code.
Couple of other questions, if I could. I... I assume that the developer is going to be responsible for building Sims Street?
Yes.
I'm trying to picture what the property is like on the west side of Second Avenue West. Is that developed already? Is that the backside of, I think there's a dental clinic?
Correct. The lower portion, the southern portion of Second Avenue West, I believe is the American. This road goes in between the American and Taco John's building. So that portion on the south end of the road is developed. On the north end, there's an undeveloped parcel, and then to the west of that is a dental
So other than the American, technically, this is undeveloped property?
The American on the west side, yes.
Yes. Apparently here, back off here now.
If I could, Mr. President, Commissioner Jackson, we do have a proposal into the, to the city right now for Lot 1, a site development plan for hotels. So while it's undeveloped, there is a, an active development for that Lot 1 parcel.
On the east side of Second?
On the east side.
Yeah, yeah. I guess what I'm getting at is, we're going to have these difficult situations from time to time where a developer would and should be responsible for a portion of the street, but there may be a fairness issue about the other side. And that's where I'm pausing a little bit here. We don't have an impact program anymore, but, you know, if we, in other words, if we were to create an improvement district, would we be assessing both sides of the street? And I think the answer would be yes.
That would be my expectation, yes.
So if we don't, you know, it's a rock and hard place for us. I don't like the idea of creating an improvement district for undeveloped ground, but if we want to be fair about it, you know, the costs should be split.
Rather than do the impact program, which is similar to an improvement district, we would not do the impact program, but create an improvement district that would lie between 16th Street and 14th Street?
Mr. President, that's correct. I think since we don't have development impact fee money available, I think we would probably be looking at this as more of a traditional special assessment district.
Right.
That would be assessed to both sides of the road. I think the developer is willing to put up their share of the money upfront rather than, than pay that through a 10-year special assessment, but that is something that is outside of the traditional special assessment district, as we've done it before.
So the way it would work, the city would fund it and special assess the respective property owners?
Correct.
We're going to fund it either way, whether we use what we call an impact, or we fund it upfront, we get our money back.
We do, and part of the discussion that we've had with the developer is that we do have more projects in the pipeline than we have money to fund, and in the event that the city puts a million dollars or whatever amount it is into this road, that's a million dollars that we don't have for one of the capital improvement projects that is already on our spreadsheet. That's one of the reasons why we did decide to, to not take new development impact fee applications, so we could move those monies to other locations.
If we tell them no on the impact fee, is, are we obligated to do the special assessment?
No, the city commission is not obligated to do that. A development impact fee district or a special assessment district is always at the discretion of the city commission. You can decide not to do those and require developers to, to build roads even if they don't adjoin all portions of that road.
Mr. President, that's my concern also, is, you know, we're requiring developers that want to develop an area that they do put in the streets of the curb and so on at their expense. I think it would be fair to ask this developer to do the same thing. I'm not in favor of creating a special assessment district that would benefit this developer and create difficulties with the opposite.
Well, the dilemma is, if you require them to do that, the opposite side gets benefit and doesn't pay anything for it.
I think we'd see those people on the opposite side come in and, and discuss whether they would benefit from it.
Well, I mean, I would expect them to come in and say they don't benefit, but the reality is, they generally do benefit. The value of their land goes up because there's a street buy, and they didn't have a share in the cost.
Is this estimate that's attached to the letter supposed to cover the entire Second Avenue West? Have we looked at that close enough to know?
That was the estimate provided by the developer, and I believe it included water and some portion of sewer in the street construction from 14th to 16th Street.
So they think, they think it's $487,000 to do that with water, sewer, and street?
That was their number again. We haven't...
You haven't checked, see if you think it's reasonable?
With some of the numbers that we've seen recently, that may have been based on some old numbers again. Like Mr. Coling said, this, this has been in the mill for quite a number of years.
Yeah, and it looks like some of the water main is probably undersized.
Well, I guess, in my opinion is, I'd just soon not try to resurrect the impact program and, but I would be willing to look at other alternatives. But I think you do have to verify these cost estimates, if they're still reasonable estimates. We have to, if we do something as a city, we have to know what the cost is.
And I hate to bring this up, but how does 16th Street fit into all this? I think that's the, north of 16th is the site of our, of the water retention, is it not?
It is, in between Second Avenue West and, and First Avenue, or First Avenue West. That regional detention pond is still being designed, and I think there is some question yet whether or not the right-of-way on 16th Street West may be needed for that pond. It depends on the size and the volumes that they'll actually be looking at. 16th Street West is now proposed to be constructed by this developer as part of this project.
But if it is, he would have some responsibility.
Correct.
Or whoever owns his lots at that time.
Like I say, this isn't the last time we're going to see a situation like this, where we've got development on one side of the street and something inactive on the other side. We have to come up with a way to address it, I think.
Okay, well, this is just a report. We've heard Mr. Coling, you've asked some questions, you've stated your opinions. Anybody else have anything else they want to say? All right, I'm going to move on then. We'll go to the fire department and Chief Seavock. Can't believe we're all ready to you.
Moving at light speed, the first item in front of you this evening, commissioners, is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the 2012 International Fire Code. It's brought to you for your consideration with the amendments needed to it, to align it with the building code, and also, at this time, we're looking to ask for the deletion of exceptions that were made in 2009 that allowed the sale of fireworks within city limits. The deletion of these exceptions would again prohibit the sale of fireworks within city limits as it is written in the code. I do believe that there are members of the retail sales community that would also like to speak to the issue in the audience.
Okay, this is ordinance 1544?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President.
Okay, well, first I'll ask if there are commissioners that have any comments or questions for Mr. Seavock, and then we'll ask for public input. Is there anything by commissioners?
Well, I would ask the Chief Seavock, I pretty much remember what you said the last time we talked about this, but go through your reasoning again, if you would.
President Johnson, commissioners, the reason we're bringing this forward to, again, ask for prohibiting the sale of retail, the retail sale of fireworks in city limits is because we believe it sends a confusing and mixed message to the population. We base that on anecdotal evidence that I myself have witnessed firsthand when we respond to complaint calls, and generally we respond to those the same time the police department does. And I have heard personally from the citizens that we're talking to about discharging fireworks within city limits. State, make comments such as, when we've purchased our fireworks, the vendors told us, "Don't worry about it." And that's not, I'm not making that statement to point fingers, but rather as a point of evidence that it is a confusing issue. It's not that the vendors could not sell fireworks, they just could not sell them within city limits. A citizen that drives to the edge of the town to have to find a fireworks stand, that may cause them to realize that, well, they're not for sale in the city. There must be a reason why they're not for sale in the city. It's because the use of them within the city is prohibited.
Yeah, I have just one question on that. Again, having two teenagers, and if you catch them doing something, there is always someone else to blame. So are you 100% sure that, you know, when you ask that person and they said, "The vendor told me I could do this," or are they just passing blame and that's a convenient answer when they're faced with, you know, the police and the fire? A natural reaction would be, "Oh, I was told that I could," whether that has a basis of truth or not. You know, I know perception is one thing, but, you know, it's another to say that the vendors were saying that it's okay. I would have just some, I would wonder about that, just because if you're put in this situation, they're going to pass the blame on to someone else.
We don't have a concrete or scientific way that we measure that, commissioner.
Right, so that would be a little bit suspect, but...
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Chief, do we issue licenses to the current...
We do.
We do. And so those are limited, are those limited, or is it...
Well, it's limited by how we've structured it into where they can actually set up within city limits. They have to be within an industrial-zoned area. They have to be a certain distance away from above-ground fuel storage tanks and other certain items, so that they're, just because a property is zoned industrial doesn't mean it's going to work for them. So that, it's limiting in that respect by the requirements we've put on it back in 2010, I believe it was, or '11 possibly, when we adopted the code with the exceptions that allowed the sale of fireworks within city limits.
My, my perspective is, is I can understand why we, we don't want them shooting off in town and so on, but I, but I kind of have a hard time understanding why we would want to eliminate a business that wants to sell them during this limited time and so on, based on being outside of the city limits or in the city limits. I would venture to say that if we say they're not eligible to sell within the city limits, I don't know if that would decrease the amount of excessive fireworks that we have within the city limits. I guess I'd have to see those facts elsewhere that would determine that. But if we need to limit a certain amount of fireworks, as we do stands, as we do liquor license and so on, that's a whole other issue. You know, we can police that if there's a few of them or a limited amount, but I'm not sold on whether we should not allow them to at least sell them within the city limits.
You know, and to the other extreme, Carson, I think, you know, you could ban them within city limits, you could ban them within Stark County, you could ban them within the state of North Dakota. They're still going, if I want fireworks, I'll go on the internet then. You know, it doesn't matter how far you, you push it out. I agree with the chief that you get a mixed message when they're for sale in the community, but you can't use them in, in the community. And you and I have had side conversations on this in years past. We know that they're banned in city limits, and we know the reasoning. We also know that there's other communities that allow fireworks in the community. And I think our biggest challenge moving forward is that we've had such an influx of people, as the school superintendent said, from every state but Hawaii. And in other states, the laws are different. And so when you move into a community, you don't necessarily check, you know, what the firework law is. And so you're going to have a, a influx of people that, because they could shoot them off in their community and their state are going to guess that that is the instance here. So obviously, our communication of that has to be increased. The biggest issue I guess I have is that we know that they're illegal in the city. We know that they're for sale all around. Where do you go to, to shoot them off? We don't have a designated area, you know, unless you know somebody that lives outside of city limits. What would be your suggestion?
That truly is the cusp of the problem, people that want to enjoy fireworks on any holiday that they're allowed.
Yeah.
And there isn't a good answer to that. That Mr. Kessel, if he was here, brings experience from Wapatin with him where they are allowed, and, and brings stories along with that, where after the Fourth of July, every city commission meeting had citizens come forward, and you've heard these stories, I think, with boxes of used fireworks that they sat down and said to the commissioners, "Look, this is, look, what I cleaned out of my yard." There's not a good answer to it. What we have to tell people that ask us, "Where can we use this? We bought some fireworks, where can we use them? We can't shoot them off in town." We have to tell them, "You have to find a spot in the county." We, we push them out into the county. Very unsuccessfully by what happens within the city over the Fourth of July season, as you all know. But that's all we can tell them. They are allowed in the county, but you have to make sure that the landowner that you may choose to be on allows you to do it also. So it, the wear of it is a real problem.
It is.
Chief Seavock, the people that I have polled in the last couple of weeks, they feel that we should allow fireworks on the Third and the Fourth of July and then raise the fines to, not $500, they should be probably $3,000 when they get caught. And I know it's hard to find the ones where they're going off, but the way it's going now, they're shooting them for months, you know? Maybe if the fine was high enough that, or if we allowed them for two days, the Third and Fourth, and then you're done.
It's an idea that the Chief Dossinger, myself, and Mr. Coling have discussed, and maybe Mr. Coling can answer this or help me to answer it. It's easier said than done, apparently, when you look at structuring the fines and the implementation of them. But it's, it's something that we've explored, and it, again, it's not just that easy.
You know, the next two Fourth of Julys, this year it falls on a Friday, next year it falls on a Saturday. It's a little easier to, you know, do what you're talking about, surely, that for certain hours during their, those two days, and especially when they fall on a weekend, you know, I think people can get around that. You know, it's when the Fourth of July falls on a Wednesday, and I have to be to work Thursday morning, and somebody can shoot them off till, you know, 2:00 in the morning. So it also depends on when the holiday falls, too.
Commissioner, excuse me, but they can't really shoot them off till 2:00 in the morning because the city noise ordinance does come into play.
Okay.
The police department is just swamped, however.
Sure.
They're just swamped, and the unfortunate inconsideration of some of the citizens towards their neighbors through this time of year...
Exactly.
...is, is the biggest thrust of the complaints they receive, I believe.
But don't you think those same people are going to be just as blatant, whether it's allowed or not? You know, you have that certain sector that if they didn't care... You know, you have that certain sector that if they didn't care when it's illegal, they're, it's going to be the same.
And as, as much as we could say that that's probably the case, then there's really no way to prove that. We could say that moving them out of city limits may help the case, and there's really no solid way to track that and prove that.
Mm-hmm.
So we bring it forward for your consideration. I would ask your consideration of this, however, Commissioners, if, if you choose to retain the sale, retail sale of fireworks within city limits, Mr. Coley, I'll ask for your help on this also. I'm wondering if we could still move forward with the ordinance, maybe recognizing through wording that the exceptions recognized in the adoption of the prior code stay in places. It's important for us to get on board with the 2012 adoption of the fire code so that we're not out of sync with the building code.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seabuck.
Thank you.
At this time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Hello, my name is Kyle Feal. I've been a resident of Dickinson for about seventeen years, and I'm the owner of Dakota Fireworks. We opened in two thousand and twelve, and we have locations on West Philard, kind of near Pizza Hut, and on East Philard, near Tiger Discount. So last year, we created eighteen seasonal jobs. We were Rough Rider Days sponsors. We inject money into the local economy during Rough Rider Days through equipment rentals, equipment purchases, media buys, everyday purchases like fuel, food, and drinks, and, you know, we're collecting sales tax revenue for the city. And I would, I guess, look forward to answering any of the, any questions that you may have for us.
So you'd like to see the ordinance still allow the sale within the city limits?
We sure would.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Feal?
I have one. What, do you have an estimate of what the sales tax revenue is?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I know, yeah, I don't know if I can really throw out a number without knowing what the other vendors are doing.
I'd be interested to know what you're going to, you know.
Sure.
Mr. Feal?
Go ahead.
Mr. Feal, you're not asking for us to approve the lighting off of fireworks within the city limits, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, we're, we're, I guess, asking to, of course, adopt the two thousand and twelve fire code with, but allow those exceptions that were made in, in two thousand and eleven. If, if the city, you know, decides to move forward with addressing the use, we would sure like to be a part of those discussions and help come up with some ideas of how we can make that work. You know, maybe, maybe that is something that would help alleviate some of the calls. You know, if people know that, you know, it's within the allowed, the permissible hours to light off fireworks, maybe we'd have fewer complaints, or maybe there needs to be a designated location to light off fireworks.
I don't think you're going to get any support up here.
Sure.
To light them off in the city limits.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
And I don't know if you're going to get any support for the sales within the city limits.
Sure.
As far as if we were allowing fireworks sales within the city limits, would you be opposed of, as part of that, a sign, and I would say a substantially sized sign, that you as the vendor have to have printed, maybe it's four by eight, it's big.
Sure.
That says fireworks are not allowed within the city limits of Dickinson, so that as a person comes to buy, no matter what you are, and I'm not accusing you as a vendor, but if a vendor is on the side saying, oh, yeah, you can shoot them off in town, but you have a substantially sized sign that says per ordinance, it is illegal to shoot off fireworks within city limits. Would you be opposed to the expense of that and to have that posted in a prominent spot?
I don't, we currently are required to have signs that announce the fact that fireworks are not to be discharged within city limits, and I think, I won't speak for the other retailers, but I think we would be open to those types of ideas and working with the city and the fire department for, you know, coming up with, you know, requirements for the signs that, that need to be posted. And we also, I would also mention that our employees are also trained on, you know, the regulations and instructed to, you know, tell people that they are not allowed to discharge fireworks within city limits, so.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Feal? Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to comment?
Hello, everyone. My name is Norris Marks. I'm from Dickinson, longtime resident, and I'd like to thank all of you for listening and hearing us out today. You may have to excuse me, I'm a bit of a cold and a little bit nervous as well, but I own a fireworks stand here in Dickinson, Norris's Hot Shot Fireworks Stand. Basically, we're located north on Highway twenty-two, and just a couple of blocks north of Walmart there. And I would like to comment on a few things as well that, that I believe are important. You know, the use of fireworks in Dickinson, you know, I, I'm not sure if I would support that. In a way I do, in a way I don't. It's, it's one of those issues that you can see has been an ongoing, you know, issue. A lot of the customers that I've dealt with have told me that they'd like to see it legal in city limits. And, you know, and I'm kind of on the wall with that as well as, I'm sure a few of you are. But I, I do know that I've put a lot of expense and time into my location as far as the electrical inspection, certificates, the wiring, and, you know, some of the issues that, that, of building the business over the last few years. And one thing that I would like to ask is that we uphold the, the sale in Dickinson for sure, and I appreciate that.
And you would not have any problem with a substantial sign that reiterates?
We, we can make a bigger sign, for sure. We have been collaborating with the fire department on that over the last few years, and I think I've had seven, maybe eight, signs posted throughout the inside and the outside of the, of the stand. They're normally roughly about that big in size. And just letting the people and, the customers know that we definitely don't want to let them off, letting them off in city limits. You know, we don't want them to do that either, if it's illegal. You know, we'd like to be able to keep our sale, for sure, especially with the time that we have into our locations. You know, we've built the business there in that spot, and customers are used to coming to that spot and looking for us, and, and I guess I'd, but I'd sure do, would sure would appreciate the, the sale to be upheld.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Marks. I think the crux of this issue is you have an ordinance that's unenforceable. The present one, the proposed one, it's unenforceable. And, you know, if last July Fourth season was any indication of how unenforceable it is, I mean, I know at my residence, you could look all four directions and enjoy quite a fireworks show, show for quite some time. And we do not have the police staff in size, nor do we, we have so many other things going on in the community that it's not going to be a high priority for them. And so it's, it's not enforceable. Do I like, personally, do I like fireworks? I really don't care for them. I don't buy them, I don't shoot them off. I like to go to bed early, but it's not enforceable. And I think in general, whether it's here at the local level, or the state level, or the federal level, it's best to pass laws, write regulations that are enforceable. If they're not enforceable, then I, I think we have issues. So if it was just solely up to me, I would allow the sale of these in the community. I would write the ordinance where we have a better chance at enforcing it, which might say that on July third, fourth, and fifth, you can shoot them off from eight o'clock at night until midnight. Anything after that is illegal, and just plain poor manners. And if we catch you, we'll have our officers write you a ticket. Now, surely, I'm not so sure we can fine them three thousand dollars. That sounds a little harsh to me, and I'm sure we're limited by the century code on what we can do there. But I think they're, you know, they're going to shoot them off whether we say it's legal or not. And we have, how many miles a street to cover now? Hundred and forty, hundred and fifty? I don't know, it's a lot of miles. And again, we may have four, five, six officers on duty, and there's a lot of other things going on those evenings, and I, I don't think they're going to write too many citations for legal fireworks. I, I think that's the reality.
I would agree with you, Mayor Johnson. You know, it's, it's kind of like them selling the fireworks and trying to prevent the public, or have the public guarantee them that they're not going to break the law. It's just kind of like a car dealer selling a car and saying, don't speed now, you know? We all know what happens there.
Well, and because there is no designated place in the county, because we have an expanding population that's going to bring their traditions to our community that they had in theirs, that right now, the ones that know that it's illegal in town, sometimes they take some different chances. Maybe they're shooting them off in their backyard instead of on their driveway, you know, or, or in a place that's less flammable, because they don't want somebody driving by to see that they're, they're doing that. I, I don't know, they're, like the mayor said, it's an unenforceable issue, and it's one that we deal with every year. These next two Fourth of July weekends might be our best opportunity to try something that we've never tried. We've tried banning, we've tried selling outside, we've tried selling inside. The only thing we've never tried is a window of opportunity to use them.
I, I think they're going to be here. If we ban the sale inside the city limits, the retailers will just find a site just outside the city limits. And as Commissioner Olman said earlier, you can buy these on the Internet, so people who want fireworks within our, that are residents of Dickinson are going to find them, they're going to shoot them off. Mr. Jackson, you were going to say something?
Well, I, I might be confused in, in adopting this two thousand and twelve fire code. Are we addressing the issue of whether or not you can use fireworks, or is it only the sale?
I've suggested we address both, and, and what I've.
But I'm wondering about this fire code issue. Are we addressing the use as we adopt the fire code?
No, sir. The way the ordinance is before you tonight to adopt the fire code and bring it into sync with the building code addresses only the sale of.
Okay.
So that, we'd have to work on this.
But the use currently in code in our city ordinance is prevented within the city limits.
Yes, sir.
And if we adopted this ordinance as written, that would still be the case then.
That's correct.
So we are addressing it.
I guess I'm not seeing it that way. I mean, I'd be interested in addressing the use in the city limits. I'd be interested in that discussion.
In this particular ordinance, the only thing is line sixteen fireworks. The possession, manufacture, storage, sale, handling, and use of fireworks are prohibited. That is the line. Yes, I think it's a bit more involved than that. Mr. Coley, we can.
Mr. President, Commissioners, the, the bulk of, of this proposed ordinance doesn't have to do with fireworks.
Right.
It is changes that are made to the existing fire code in order to adopt the two thousand and twelve international fire code. The one section that does have to do with fireworks does make some reference, well, say that it, this proposed ordinance deletes the sections of the current code that allow for the sale of fireworks within city limits, and it states that the sale of fireworks within city limits is prohibited. It does not reference the violation in city code of discharging fireworks within city limits. That offense is contained within a separate section of code that is not referenced or included in this ordinance. If you would like to make a change to that section of code, we'd, we'd need to bring another ordinance to you.
Sure, and, and, you know, I think that might be worth discussing. Until, like saying we can sell beer in town, but we can't drink it in town, you know? So I tend to agree with Chief Seabuck's suggestion, as long as our ordinance says we can't use fireworks in town. If we want to change that, let's change it. I mean, let's discuss that, not tonight, but.
Surely, the meeting's been long enough, we're as well rolled that into it, too.
Well, I, I think it makes sense to address both of these at the same time. I hate to see the fireworks issue hold up this, this whole international fire code adoption.
And I wonder, is it, is there a way we, is there a way we could move forward first reading of the adoption of the two thousand and twelve fire code with the amendments excluding addressing the fireworks?
Well, we can, however we.
That's what we're trying to do.
However we do this tonight, we can come back and amend the fire code, can't we?
You can, and this is first reading of this ordinance. This puts it on the commission's agenda. Nothing takes effect until final passage, which would be in two weeks. If there are changes that you would like to make, we can bring those back at second reading.
Who here at this table favors not, favors not allowing the sale of fireworks within the city limits? Do any of you as Commissioners favor that?
The way our ordinance stands today, I would favor it.
Anybody else? So I think by your silence, I'm assuming there's four of us that would prefer to have it remain as is with the sale within the city limits. But I also think all five of us would like to look at that section, that ordinance that prohibits the use in the city limits, because, again, as I said earlier, it's not enforceable. We could just as well address that.
We will do every effort to, I'll get together with Chief Dossinger, and we'll get together with Mr. Coley and see if we can't get that before you for second reading. Would that?
Yes. What, what I'd suggest we do is we pass the ordinance tonight as it is, with the understanding that you're going to bring, when you bring it back for second reading, you're going to have written it in such a way that allows the sale in the city limits. You're also going to bring to us for first reading the ordinance involving whether or not we're going to prohibit it in the city limits, which would mean there'd be no change, or if you're going to allow some hours where they can be used, because they're being used anyway in very large quantities.
Well, and I think it's important for Chief Seabuck to know, we try, I, I will try not to speak for everybody, but I think I am. I trust you implicitly, you know, anytime that you come before us and make a recommendation, I know it's based on your years of experience, and that you are always looking out for the safety and security of our community. And so I would hope. And so I would hope that you would not think that this is questioning that or taking any of that into question. It's just, it's a conundrum.
On the contrary, Commissioner, I agree with you, actually. Because when we receive the calls, the complaint calls, and when the police department receives the complaint calls from the citizens that want us to act on the ordinance that's in place, there's nobody more aware of how difficult it is to act on that and enforce that than the police officers that already have 100 other things to do-
Exactly.
-over that holiday celebration, or the fire department that is at least as strapped as they are, if not more so, because of our limited full-time staff. So it, the unenforceable aspect of what's on the book is exceptionally acute to us.
Okay.
Personally, I'd prefer nobody shot them off in the city limits.
So move.
They do. I mean, I can understand it's from a safety perspective, from the noise perspective. But the reality is, they're going to disobey, if we continue with our current ordinance, they're going to disobey it in large numbers.
We will work on that.
So is that acceptable? I mean-
Yes.
So I will make the motion to approve first reading of this ordinance.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing done on the vote. Mr. Altman's-
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard-
Aye.
Mr. Jackson-
Aye.
Mr. Steiner-
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The second item we have before you tonight, Commissioners, is the 2013 Annual Report of the Activities of the Dickinson Fire Department. It's taken us all evening to get to the most exciting report that you'll see this evening, but finally, here we are. So that's early 1800s, or I should say, late 1800s, actually. That is Dickinson's steamer that they owned at the time. And the suction line is going into a well in the ground. That's how they got their firefighting water back then. I surely hope that infrastructure can keep up, Commissioners and Mr. Cubas, so that we don't have to revert to that for our water for firefighting. Today, the Dickinson Fire Department looks like that. At the end of 2013, the membership of the fire department consisted of 38 volunteer firefighters, six full-time staff, two volunteer chaplains, three reserve firefighters. The number of volunteer members remains fairly consistent, as you've seen in other reports, from year to year. We had 12 new members join the department in 2013. Again, you know, when we talk about our recruitment efforts, and we use every facet we can, media, paper, personal contact, everything, it's working, bringing in 12 new people in a year. Our recruitment efforts are working. By year end, we lost five members, however. The breakdown of our firefighters looks like this. Forty-eight percent of our firefighters right now have five years or less on our department. That makes training extremely important. Of the 20 people that make up that 48%, 16 of those firefighters have been with us for less than two, for two years or less. Again, we talk about how important that makes to training, because really, this is not something that we can ask of our volunteers to learn on the job. So the training hours that they invest is substantial. Collectively, our firefighters invested 2,803 hours in training in 2013, in categories such as the essentials of firefighting. That's the basic component that leads to state certification. State certification, that's now pro-board accredited, that gives them NFPA 1001 certification. Hazmat, hazardous materials training, special training, that's classroom training, like EMT classes, so on. The probation training is their basic first amount of training that they receive from us, so they can stay safe on the fire ground before we start them in the essentials program. Regular monthly trainings encompass any and all of these special categories. Special operations is either confined space, high-angle rescue, or auto extrication training. And every year, we send at least six to eight members to state fire school. A lot of times, our members act as instructors at state fire school. And an interesting note, members that have left our department for other communities that are now serving on fire departments in other communities are now showing up at the state fire school as instructors. Speaks very highly of what we can do for them in our training program, I think. One of the reasons we train the way we do is because of what we see happening with the incidents. 2009, again, we recognize 2009, a lot of things happened in Dickinson. We hosted the 125th Annual State Firefighters Convention. We got hit by an F-3 tornado, and we recognize 2009 as the beginning of what we refer to as the boom. 218 calls for service compared to 2013, 466 calls for service. 114% increase over 2009, with the largest jump actually taking place between 2011 and 2012, 286 to 399. Here again, you know, a bit ago, quite a bit ago, actually, with this meeting, Mr. Kessel was asked about background to talk about the 21,000 population. Look what's happening here, Commissioners. This is, this is population-driven. It's not happening with the base population we had back here. The incident reports, this just breaks down the type of categories. False alarms and false calls make up a large portion, but it's also kind of misleading, because in false alarms and false calls, we also have fires that have, or alarms that have been turned in because of smoke, a cooking fire on the stove, or something like that. Special type is, again, the hazardous materials training. Fires, we had 55 fires. Hazardous conditions, can be anything from a gas leak to a hazardous material spill. Medical rescue and response, we're seeing an increase in that. Service calls and good intent calls depends on what we're being called to do. A service call, maybe we're being called to help reset a fire alarm. A good intent call means we're responding to check somebody that thinks they smell smoke in their house at 2:00 in the morning. In dealing with the building fire portion only, or in dealing with the fire portion only, it's broken down into these areas. Building fires, 24. That compares to 14 in 2012. We're seeing an increase with our population growth and with the building in the area, we're seeing an increase in the building fire category, and a larger increase in that category than any of the other categories. We had 55 fires, actual fires, in 2013 compared to 44 in 2012. And this graph actually is just another representation of the bar graph of the incidents that you saw a couple pages ago. The red line on the bottom reflects 2011's responses by month. The green line through the middle represents 2012's, and the blue line on top, kind of intersecting the green line at three points, is 2013's. Now, at this time, Commissioners, I'd like to turn the next portion of our report over to our senior fire inspector, Mr. Mark Selly. He's going to be addressing, along with what's important with incidents, the response times. How are we getting there?
Mr. President, Commissioners, this next graph you see here is showing our response times in the 466 calls that we had. It's the amount of time it takes for initial personnel to get on scene. Well, that's not a truck, or maybe a truck, but it may be just a single person or individual. We'll get into that a little bit more with these next slides, showing a little bit different things. Here's our response times that we have in the general alarms, where NFPA standard 1720 states that a combination fire department should have 15 firefighters on scene within nine minutes, 90% of the time. 2012, we did not meet this standard 90% of the time. If you look at this chart, you'll notice that we did not meet that standard at any of these fires that we had that we were able to track this. You're looking at that, the 501 is our first initial response truck. It shows you there in minutes what it takes to respond to a call, and 15 personnels in the green. You can see from most fires, we were not able, we did meet it at one point, at call number five. If you look at the time which that call took place, it's at 9:48 in the morning. At the time, we, that's when we had full-time staff, just a regular office staff, happened during the week, and were able to respond with that full-time staff. These other ones happened nighttime, or maybe even weekends. Next one is the fire dollar loss. This is the, showing the fire dollar loss throughout the years. If you notice, we have a spike in 2007. If you remember, that's the East End Auto Fire and the Old Elks Building. 2012, that large amount is from the JCPenney's fire, all the merchandise lost in that fire. And interesting note, for 2013, still a large amount of money, that actually is based on, there's 111 instances that involved one and two family homes. That's where the majority of this cost came from, about 800, 800,000. That's where the majority of this came from, a single family and two-family homes, where that big jump came from. Cost per capita, this is a cost that we've had established base per person. It's based on the amount of dollars that we received back from the insurance premium rebate. If you notice, that's $160,000, a little over. That is actually 100% since the legislation has changed. The fire departments now get 100% of that check, which had brought down our cost. We are using an estimated cost, or estimated capita of 28,500, which has lowered our cost per capita as well. Grants and donations that we received in 2013. We got the homeland security grants, the sustainment of equipment grant, that's for calibration gas, the maintenance and replacement of monitors, and also a bench test that required for some of our air pack systems for hazardous materials. The donations that we have there, those dollars helped buy that equipment you see in that photo, auto extrication equipment, and some rope rescue equipment. That's all stuff that's been purchased in the last year and is now being deployed on our trucks. I guess one other, the regional response training, I didn't touch on that one. That is a grant from state homeland security that we're going to be sending one of our firefighters to, a training in Baltimore. It's a national hazmat training. This is our equipment replacement graph. The standards say that a pumper should be used for 20 years, and, you know, an aerial apparatus can be used for 30 years. As you can see, some of our trucks have surpassed their life. This is a recommendation, and it's based on use. And if you're looking at 506, our second one from the right-hand side, that is one truck that's going to be replaced in this upcoming year with that purchase we have with our new ladder truck. So that one will be coming out of service. The ones that we've purchased recently, 502 and 501, were purchased at every five-year intervals. This next purchase that we just did make was a seven-year interval. That's something that might have to change, and with recent growth that we're going to be having, we may need additional equipment to help supplement the department, not just replacement of the ones we have. And now I'll turn it over to Fire Prevention Specialist Deb for the remaining report.
Mr. President, Commission? I guess we get to talk about kind of the more fun part of our job, and that's in fire prevention. You can often hear, or it has been referred to as the three Es, where we talk about enforcement, engineering, and education. So some of the slides you see up here, the pictures are in public education, some of the events that have taken place throughout the year. I just want to mention that we are currently running with a full-time staff of myself, a fire prevention specialist, or a fire marshal, is equivalent. We have a senior fire marshal, and we have another fire inspector onboard full-time. With the recent hires of our full-time firefighters, we're going to bring them into this program and hopefully get them involved more so with enforcement and public education, which our volunteers also participate in. Our volunteers are also doing pre-plans when they can, in helping us get used to, or knowing what the layout of these buildings that are coming online are. This is just giving you an overview of the inspections that were conducted in 2013. You can see that our routine inspections increased. We had 678 in 12, and they currently are 809. Our follow-up inspections you see there are 640, and that's going back when we had a fire hazard found or a fire code violation that needed to be corrected to bring it to current code requirements. So that's what those follow-up inspections are doing. The acceptance tests and the construction inspections are increased from last year. Part of the reason is, we're kind of capturing some of the tests that we're doing. The acceptance tests include an alarm test, a sprinkler test, elevator test, or a hood suppression test on some of our new buildings that are coming online that are being occupied today. All of those have to be accepted by a fire official in order for occupancy to occur. So that's why we're there quite a few times on one building. We do try to coordinate that, so we're not, but at times, the vendor or the contractor just can't make it, so we have to make special provisions for that. We also see that we've had our final inspections, complaint calls. Child care encompasses preschool, family daycare, and group childcare inspections. And then our walkthroughs, where we may just walk through, for instance, Prairie Hills Mall, or if we have another special event at the rec center, or any of those places, we can just walk through and see what's going on in there. Another thing I want to show you is, look what the total inspections are for that year was, 2,143. And you see on this next slide, that increase. Keep in mind that that third inspector we hired is now been onboard for a full year, and with the training that was provided to him, we can actually go out and he can do really good routine inspections. So that training period is now over, and we're seeing the fruits of that training taking place. Even though that, we're kind of staying still within two years to two and a half years of getting back into the businesses of these locations, we're not falling behind, but hopefully with the use of our firefighters, we can still maybe capture or get, get that closer together. We don't want to be two years, two and a half years out on our routine inspections. We'd like to be maybe 18 months to two years. Because we're finding that this community is changing rapidly in our buildings. When we get back in two, two and a half years, we've seen a lot of changes, and we can find a lot of violations that shouldn't be there. So if we can get that reduced to maybe 18 months to two years, that'd be a lot better than what we're doing. Okay? The next one. This is the public education activities that have occurred. We conducted 72 lectures, 19 demonstrations. That includes fire extinguishers, some of the gear that we're utilizing, our rescue equipment. Fire drills conducted throughout the community, we had 22. And of course, the tours. The greatest majority of these lectures and tours are conducted through, in October, during Fire Prevention Month, we like to call it, but it is a nationally recognized campaign, which is a week-long. As you can see there, we, we addressed over 1,400 students, ranging from preschool through college this last year. And we do have to witness by fire code a fire drill in all of our schools, including the college, or the university, excuse me. Our staff does conduct fire extinguisher training when time permits, and we also do coordinate the citywide spring cleanup, which gets a little bit more difficult each year. As the community grows, it seems that we have a little bit more debris out there, so we need to work a little bit harder on that. And then, of course, we'll finish the report with some of the fire calls that we responded to throughout the year. As it was mentioned earlier, that we do try to have a good quality of life here in the city of Dickinson, and our fire department staff and our volunteers want to continue with training to provide a good quality level of service for our citizens. That concludes our report. If there's any questions, I'm sure some of us up here can answer them. I hope.
I'd like to thank the three of you for your excellent presentations. It clearly shows the city's growing, you're busy, lots of issues. Comments, questions?
I guess, and you don't have to, but I know it's on everybody's mind, with the recent fire at the Trinity School, do you have anything on that that you want to share with the public that hasn't been covered in the newspaper, or?
President Johnson, Commissioners, we can tell you this much, we received the call this morning at 1:15 a.m., and we responded with four pieces of apparatus, three utility vehicles, 29 firefighters. We called the control time on the fire shortly after 3:00 a.m. The last unit left the scene at about 6:40 a.m. So some of us have been up all day since 1:00 a.m. And what's helping me, Commissioner, is I'm concentrating on the middle person of the three of you that I see right now. And we'll just continue to concentrate on that. The investigation is ongoing. There was a lot of smoke in the building, it was heavily charged with smoke, I can tell you that there, there was smoke damage throughout the school. All portions of the school suffered smoke damage. The front part of the school, the office area, suffered heavy fire damage. And there was structural damage to the roof and floor structure above that office area where the library is housed. There was not any flame extension beyond that office area, however. But there's some serious damage.
And, you know, initial reports are- And, you know, initial reports are indicating perhaps no activities or classes through the rest of this year. Does that seem accurate, inaccurate, too early to tell?
Too early to tell. I think they're, they're going to have to get some contractors involved, their insurance companies, some structural engineers, and get some opinions on the damage that was done, and options on repair. It's, it's a difficult, difficult thing, a difficult time for them. I was really, really glad to hear that they're working with the Dickinson Public School System and Dickinson State College, and I hope that between those resources, they find some answers to what they need to do with the students.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief. Now, we'll go to the Police Department, Chief Dossinger. You've got at least one item here, North Dakota DOT Safety Division Amendment.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. I come before you in requesting approval of a $5,800 grant to concentrate on distracted driving. This is an amendment to our existing grant contract with DOT. This is a no-match grant, which costs us no money to work. With this amendment, we would receive a $21,850 total to concentrate on impaired driving, oxygen protection, and also distracted driving. Distracted driving to be concentrating on texting and driving, particularly our, our younger drivers.
Thank you, Chief. You've heard his request. Would there be a motion regarding this amendment?
I'll make that motion.
To approve?
Yes, what's amendment?
We have a motion to approve in the second. Any discussion or questions for the chief? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Stucard.
Aye.
Ms. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to engineering, and Mr. Kubas will let you take us through those items.
All right. Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. I'd like to kind of tackle the first two items together. They were bid separately, and this was the Empire Road Utilities and Empire Road Street Construction. But as you recall, some of you had been involved over the past year, the discussion with St. Joseph's Hospital, and these were bid in conjunction with Willer Circle, the street that the hospital was required to build as part of their development. And it also included a multi-use trail that brought in a third party, which was the Dickinson Park and Recs Department. And so, there's three entities that have some, some money involved with this project, but we believe that the bids were very good. We had a highly competitive bid on the utilities package with nine bidders bidding that project. And Meyer Construction was the apparent low bid on that project. The, the street construction was less competitive. We had two bidders, each bidding one of our alternates. We bid an asphalt package and a concrete package, and Wynn Construction was the, the low bid, bidding, of course, the, the concrete on that project. So, right now, we have before you a recommendation of award. What we would like to do, though, is, is to work with these three entities, because while everyone had strong verbal commitments of dollars, the city, the hospital, and the Park and Recs included, we'd like to memorialize those commitments before we move forward with a construction contract. Right now, we could award the project, allowing the contractors to get some of their paperwork in order, and formalize that at our meeting on the 17th. At that time, we might even have construction documents that would be ready to, to sign construction contract documents.
Okay, are you, do you want us to approve these bids to these?
What, what we would recommend doing is, is moving forward with a notice of award, approving the award for each of those contract, one to Meyer Construction, one to Wynn Construction, with the condition that we, we get some memorialized agreement in place with the hospital and the Park and Recs Department.
Okay, I assume those are two separate motions, Mr. Colleen, and one for Meyer and one for Wynn?
That's correct, Mr. President, yes.
Okay. So, the motion, as I understand it, would be to approve the award to Meyer Construction with the understanding that you're going to memorialize that bit, that arrangement?
Correct, yep. Right now, we have the, the financial commitment from all three parties, but we'd like to get that in writing.
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Stucard.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, the second item would be a similar motion, except it would be to Wynn Construction and with the same memorialization language.
Correct.
I'll make that motion. Second it.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Stucard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Item C is a planning and modeling agreement with Apex Engineering. They've been doing planning and modeling for the sanitary sewer system in Dickinson for a little over a year now. This would be an extension of those services. It would continue the arrangement with Apex Engineering Group to provide for the general planning and modeling services for sanitary sewer related to the incorporation of new developments. These services include tasks relating to the existing city infrastructure, and on a case-by-case basis, as requested by city staff for new development. Items typically included in this task would be flow projections, capacity evaluations, improvement planning, coordination, and regulatory compliance. The task compensates services at a direct labor times a factor of three, with an hourly not to exceed maximum of $100,000. Staff recommends approval.
Any comments, questions by Commissioners?
So, this work is going to be done on needed, on an as-needed basis, as you?
Correct. As developments come up, as we have issues that are brought to us, brought to us by city staff, we can take them to Apex, and they do the modeling and the, the capacity ratings.
Other comments, questions? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll move, we approve the agreement.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Stucard.
Aye.
Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Item D is a first reading for an engineer, engineering fee ordinance. The fees that we charge for engineering review are actually in the subdivision ordinance in Section 34. Right now, that ordinance has written that the deposit, a deposit should be made by the developer or an applicant. At such time, we would start doing the review as city staff or consultants, and we would draw on the deposit that was made. Though, that isn't currently being followed in all cases. The revised ordinance in front of you would ask that the, the developer make that deposit and upfront, and we would use it as a lump sum payment. And essentially, we would, we would take that and do our reviews, as we're doing now, but we wouldn't ask that developer for additional money, or make them a refund at the end of the review, as the ordinance is currently stated. It kind of gets to be a financing nightmare, tracking those dollars internally as the dollars come in and we draw on that account. So, this would, would clean up the ordinance in regards to the engineering fees, and I, I think it will help out the developers, you know, get their costs set upfront. They'll know what, what the engineering review is going to be for their development or for their site. They pay that money upfront, and it, it's kind of a fixed cost that they can roll into their project.
Okay, is this 1545, Mr. Colleen?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, you've, you've heard the introduction. Are there comments or questions by Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1545.
You're a little bit ahead of me. I'll just, is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on 1545? Okay, no one from the public. So, we have a motion from Ms. Stucard. Is there a second?
A second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Stucard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do you want to dispense with the project updates?
I'd love to, if that would be okay with the Commission.
Are there any project questions by Commissioners? Okay, we'll look forward to your updates. At the next meeting, Public Works is no longer here. We'll go to Community Development. There's one item there, it's a replat, and we'll let Mr. Colleen tell us about this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an application for a final plat. It's a replat of S and B subdivision. This property is located westerly of State Avenue North and southerly of 21st Street West. Essentially, this replat vacates the connection of Sierra Commons Road to 21st Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission has considered this matter and recommends approval. Mr. Cortan, as Community Development Director, recommends approval as well. This would be Resolution 15-2014, for your records. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Colleen? Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Ms. Stucard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Are there any comments by Commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the Commission? If so, may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public? Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.